And then, uh, once this is over, we will see how much time we have left and then we'll go to our regular council meeting at six. From what I understand from our last conversation, two things, Mr. Gates is here to ask any, answer any questions of him, should you have any? And wave your hand back there in the back. Bond council, if you have any questions about that. So, uh, I think what the goal was tonight was to talk about each individual project and kind of see what the council's leaning was on that. Does that sound correct to y'all? This time, council, it's up to you, if you've got a question for the bond council or for Mr. Gates or for each other. I guess the best place to start would be, what do you like and what do you not like, if anything?
If I could just, a little background, since I had an email exchange this morning with, uh, Mr. Whittingham. Tyler, would you come up and tell the council? Um, I had asked him to pull from the last five years, any capital purchases out of the general fund that would qualify under that cap that we're calling safety. Just because I, I guess I need to have some perspective, um, knowing that that does not reflect what should have been spent in terms of capital needs, but I think at least gives us an idea of what kind of impact potentially moving forward that could have on the general fund itself. So I'll let you.
Uh, the total was about 10 million. Uh, the primary items on that list, the fire station, the new fire station we did, uh, I don't have the, I didn't bring the list with me. I don't know if you've got a copy of it.
Are you talking about the apparatus? Fire apparatus next?
I think there were, yeah, there's fire trucks on that list.
Yeah, and Chief Winters here can tell you a little bit on that, on how many.
Yeah, and it also includes the, it includes the loan that council approved recently that was for the fire truck and for the, uh, new equipment out at the emergency operations center. But 10 million in total over five years, uh, in this, you know, an eighth of a cent would bring in more than that over a five-year period. So it would have covered those purchases and more, if it would have been in place.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're not on anywhere.
I know you've talked about doing a quarter cent for public safety and another eighth, just to kind of give an apples to apples comparison, an eighth would have covered those purchases over the last five years.
What approximately would it be caused, would it cause for us to get the range? I know that's one thing we were talking about, we need it, and I'm sure we really need that, but about how much does that cost?
I don't have that number, sir.
Shooting range, mayor, do you remember?
Costs for the shooting range?
Estimated costs for the shooting range?
Indoor shooting.
Five million.
Five million?
Yeah, and that's probably, that's probably gone up some because when Chief first brought that to me a couple of years ago. So probably not a lot, but I, I think he, he said five million. That is indoor because we, we'll be right back where we started, outdoor.
Oh, that's, that's fine, I just know indoors and adequate for all the training, the fire, you don't, I shouldn't ask that, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm sorry, Theo, I was adjusting my hearing aids, go ahead and ask me again.
Just asking, are we, are we lying, no?
Yes, we're lying.
I was just asking, would that be adequate for the, the shooting, the qualification, everything that the police have to do indoors? That's the only, I don't think, I was asking because sometimes you have to use a rifle and a shotgun, and I didn't know if it was, that would suffice, that's the only thing I was.
He did not go into that much detail with me, I'm, I'm just assuming, and it is an assumption, but that, that it covered, covered all weapons, but that's a good question I, I need to ask.
Should I ask earlier, but I just thought about that, yeah. When you say, I didn't, I hadn't, I might have heard or probably misheard, as my granddaughter said, I misheard it was going to be indoors and not outdoors, and that's what my concern was.
Okay, yeah, I'll get you an answer on that, though.
And then, the second question, I've got it pulled up here, um, is, I asked about the AMP sales tax that we get, the portion that goes for, um, parks and recreation capital, for the most part. And after we pay debt service, um, and the two operational things that we support through that, it leaves about 2.3 million available for other capital expenditures. Just mostly because, under, under, yes, under parks and rec. So, looking at if any of these things fit that way, is that a possibility? I don't know. And then the last question, and Tyler was real good to kind of pull this, is, you know, we've had a, a few people comment about, you know, the level of debt that this would incur and add on to existing debt, and from what Tyler had told me, I think the ratios are set at the state level?
State law, yes ma'am.
Okay, and then, and that we're not anywhere close to even reaching that threshold. Try to pull up here what she's.
Yeah, the.
What is that threshold, Tyler?
Explain that, please, to folks that are watching, please.
Sure, yeah, so the state law regarding, uh, five-year financings is, uh.
Want me to pull it up?
No, it's, it's okay. Uh, the total outstanding debt of your five-year financings should not exceed 5% of the assessed value of property in the city. And then, when it comes to bonded debt, there's a state law that addresses that and says your total bonded debt, or general obligation debt, as they call it, should not exceed 20% of the value of the assessed property in the city.
It's all property?
Yes, real, uh, personal and utility.
Off the top of your head, do you know what that number is?
I've got the, uh, the limits, and I made note of the limits. So, under those stipulations, we would be allowed up to $74 million in five-year financing debt, and we'd be up to 296 million capped for our bonded debt.
Twenty-six?
Yes, sir.
And what you had emailed me was, right now, we have about 4.5 million in outstanding loans for five-year financing and 56 million for outstanding bond debt. So, 56 to the 296, and, uh, that, yeah. And thank you for pulling it so quickly for me, because I was just curious, like, where we are, you know, because people are throwing out a lot of statements, and, so I, I really, it's important for me to really get the, the numbers and, and understand what's going on.
And as a, as a point of clarity, you nor anyone are suggesting, oh, let's push closer to that limit.
Oh, no, 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 no.
We're just saying.
No, because, yeah, I've listened and read, read less on social media these days, but listen to what people say when they come up and talk, and, and they brought that up, and are confusing debt with, you know, operating losses, and it's different. And so, I, I just really wanted a picture of our already committed debt, and then what we're looking at, what might be added to it.
Right.
And of the, only the parts that's bonded, if the sales tax were to pass, would get added to those figures.
Correct.
Because the other, the three eights at the top would be pay-as-you-go.
Right, no debt associated with that.
Thank you, Mr. Whittingham.
Sir.
One eighth provides, how much again?
2.5, is that, 2.75.
I read right there. Maybe this is a question for bond council, if he's willing to come up.
We all sit real close to the back of the room.
And, and honestly, I'm asking these questions as much for the people watching and in the audience as for myself. Um, so, with what we, and I know all this can change based on interest rates and, you know, nothing has officially happened yet, but it looks like the, the sales tax collects at, at like the 2.75, and we were to do, the citizens were to vote to do all of it, all these projects, we would pay off the bonds in about 19 or 20 years, is that about right?
That's, that, that is correct, just for the record, Paul Phillips, uh, Senior Managing Director at Cruze and Associates, and obviously, I know most everybody in the room, I've worked with the city for well over two decades, so. But to your point, um, you know, following the narrative and knowing that projects still have to be decided and the cost of those projects have to be agreed upon before we can put that in an ordinance, um, the narrative seems to have singled around maybe $95 million worth of projects in the aggregate. Whether all those make the cut, that's still to be determined. But under that assumption, what we would do is structure a financing secured solely by the three eights. Okay, um, 100% of those collections of that three eights would go to pay the debt service, and it would go prepay bonds. And so, if that tax was to grow over time, you would have, accelerate your prepayments, right? If it stayed the same, uh, which is our, what we've kind of put in our analysis to say if it stayed the same on those 95 million, we would run that probably with like, um, a 30-year scheduled final maturity. But remember, you're getting, you know, uh, almost $9 million worth of receipts off three eights, you're going to be paying closer to, you know, 7 million, so you're going to have roughly 2 million extra each year to prepay. And under that methodology, it's about 19 years.
And then, when the bonds are paid off, the tax goes away?
Correct, so it's, it's, it's got a built-in sunset, it's temporary in nature, so if the taxes, you grow by 5%, that'd probably shorten it by another six years. If it's 2.5%, it'd be more like three years.
Hey, Andy, you were getting ready to start. Wanted to talk about projects.
No, I, well, I did want to talk about projects, and we've been given, um, a bunch of information. It's the Chamber of Studies, like this. Estimated people that will use these projects, uh, on estimated, I believe estimated receipts, Mr. Gates? Is that correct as well? And, uh, in, in my mind, this is me, there are four projects that do, do kind of stick out and say, we're ready to do this, and that is, obviously, the outdoor theater. End theater. It's, uh, anyway. Uh, the end theater, the, uh, pension center, uh, studies, uh, show that that to be a situation. A lot of additional sales tax revenue for it. To help me.
Boardwalk?
Thank you. The Conway Project, uh, and.
Those are the four, yeah, those are the four that add up to 95 million.
Having seen the information that, that, that I have seen, um, I think those are projects that, that at least, that I can get behind and support. Because here's what I do know, and this goes back to Tyler for just a minute. And I need to move forward on here. Tyler, I think you gave me information that through July of this year, our payroll was 30-something million dollars. Is that, is that about right? Which would mean we're probably going to end the year at 50, give me an estimate on that, if you would? About, about $50 million in payroll. If we don't do a thing but take a 3% increase in salary for everybody over the next 10 years, that 50-something million dollar number goes to, I believe, it's 70-something million? Uh, thank you very much, I was hoping you'd stand up and, and help me with this. It was $17 million more, between 17 and 18 million dollars more at 3%. So, we're going to have to find a way to come up with that kind of money for future councils and for future mayors.
And employees.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying, for, for this body to be able to give 3% to everybody every year. And so, if we don't do something, we're left with what we've got right now, trying to make a $70 million payroll with what we have in our town right now, and I'm not sure that works. That's just my opinion.
I may have given you more information than you asked for, because that, that 30 million up through July included insurance, matching pensions and everything, that was not just salaries. So, a 3% cost of living is not going to be on that total number that you're thinking of.
Okay.
You have that math handy by chance?
No, sorry, I don't.
Um, what is that percentage match that we, uh, into pension funds for police and fire?
24% for our uniform, police and fire, and 10% for all non-uniform.
So if somebody makes $1,000, then uniformed, we're on the hook for $1,240, basically.
Is that, yeah, is it that?
It would be a yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
Yeah, 240 added to the thousand.
And $1,100 for the non-uniform.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, my numbers might be a little off, might be a little skewed, but the bottom line of it is, we're going to have to find a way to generate more money to keep our people and to keep them happy. There's just, there's no way around it. That's my, that's, that's my opinion, and somebody else might have a different opinion. Thank you, Tyler.
I think as we've been having conversations around first responder compensation, we need to remember the other 300-something people that work for the city as well, right?
Over 700.
I knew, I was trying to subtract out first responders, and my, yeah, I knew, I was, I was trying to take out first responders there, so.
Over 700.
So, if we look at that and look at not getting back into the place that we've been in the past, that, that's where, in the deep dive into data in the last couple of weeks, it's like, okay, I'm, I'm sold on the expanding the base thing at this point, because if we look at what is happening with sales tax now, we cannot argue with the fact that Cersei and Russellville are building their own stuff. We are going to lose those shoppers, and Amazon ain't going away. So we got to get creative on some way to come up with money to be able to take care of those people, if we want to, which we do. And.
That's my two cents.
So, next, and I don't know who this question is for, I don't know if it's, if it's Mr. Fink or Matt, or if it's bond council, how, when we look at these four projects that we're talking about, how would those appear on the ballot? Is it?
It would be individual.
And how does that work with the, if we're talking one-eighth here for those projects, how does that intersect? Like, are they voting on one-eighth and then voting on each of the four things? And we could potentially say yes to the one-eighth and no to all four things? Like, I don't understand how that works.
Would it be three eights? So it's probably, yeah.
That's what I don't know.
Three eights and we pay it off early.
Oh, you better stay close, brother, you thought you were going to be able to hide, but no.
They probably got Gordon scared because I'm opining to his legal, but that's all right, it won't be the first time. Um, so you would have, initially, you would have the question, right, to levy three eights and pledge those to bonds. And each of the purposes is, is a specific question, okay? So if you had an amphitheater, that's a question, and within that question, you can be as, you know, kind of descriptive as you want. Um, you can decide whether land's supposed to be involved in that question or not, you've got flexibility in how that's designed. The one thing we'll have to do is we'll have to put a not-to-exceed amount for each of the projects. So, that's kind of, you know, as I follow the narrative, I, I, I'm thinking about this all the time, going, okay, what's, what's the not-to-exceed number for the amphitheater? What's the not-to-exceed for the boardwalk, okay? And then the other two questions, um, so, but each one of those would be as descriptive as necessary for the ballot purposes, and then it would have a not-to-exceed amount. So if all four pass, you know, back to your question earlier, we've kind of already talked about what that might look like in terms of duration. You could have a situation where maybe one passes, and then, you know, if it's with the smallest one, it could pay off really fast, right? Um, so there's, there's always going to be the unknowns until you actually have the vote, so. But each purpose, um, the way Gordon had laid it out, that you'd have four questions, as you described those earlier.
Would it be five questions?
Five questions with the tax.
One for the tax?
Yes, and then.
Four for the.
And then you've got.
And then you've got the pay-as-you-go.
Yeah, that's a whole separate issue.
Public safety and then an eight for.
And on public safety, we need to add CIOC in, on that as well.
Yes, because that, Tyler included CIOC in those numbers that he gave.
Those questions are on their own, separate, there's no authorization, as, as it's intended, at least at this moment, that any of those dollars would be pledged to bonds whatsoever.
So, so, the citizens would have a chance to vote on public safety, streets and drainage, do they want a bonded sales tax of three eights? And if they do, here are the four projects and they could vote on.
Yes or no.
Yes or no on each one of the four? And if one of them passes, like you said, it'd pay off quicker. If two of them pass, it would still pay off quicker than 19, 20 years, okay?
Right.
Stay close, I mean.
I have a question for you, if, if, if the, uh, the three eights on the bond debt failed, what does that do?
Then we have no security for the bonds.
Okay.
So, no revenue stream. Nothing happens at that point, doesn't make any difference what happens on the individual bonds. You got to have, you got to levy the tax in order to pay the debt. $85 million is me the concern. Personally think, go with maybe a couple of those now and kind of crawl before we walk, later on, add a couple more. But I do also know too, that I learned quickly after I was elected, that not everybody eats the same ice cream as I do. That's why there's so many varieties, so, you know, I'm.
So, what I'm hearing so far is there's interest around the four projects that we're talking about, potentially, potentially pairing that back, infrastructure, public safety. I'm sorry, my train of thought just completely derailed, it's going to come right back. Oh, what we're, what we're not talking about is the projects that we talked about previously that haven't been mentioned tonight, which that would include district court, the parking deck, and the downtown farmer's market. It sounds like not now?
You can't do the farmer's market without the other two, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't have any information, I mean, I don't have any information.
Other projects.
Our biggest problem with district court location.
Yeah. I'm already on record as saying we'd like, I'd like to have that moved out of downtown, but I know that Mr. Jones, who is a lot smarter on, on stuff like that than I am, because, you know, I never thought about needing to have places where they could bring inmates to and have it in a secured situation, uh, uh, so, I appreciate you bringing that to my, to my attention the other day.
If I understand our timeline correctly, this will be, uh, the council will take a vote on these different projects September 2nd. So there, we won't take a vote tonight, uh, the council will take a vote September 2nd. Is that how you guys remember it?
It's how I remembered it, because I think.
That's right.
As well, is not available one meeting and I'm not available one.
It's next week, I won't be here, I'll be here for the August meeting, but. And I won't be here next week.
And we will have public comment, uh, the, the, yeah, at the, at the, uh, August meeting and the September 2nd meeting, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's my understanding as well, September 2nd.
Well, my thinking, when I'm at the top of my list, other than the public safety and everything, I'm for the convention center and the amphitheater now. The other things, y'all can talk me into it, but I think that should be, well, I ain't going to say I think it should be, that, that is my two priorities of, of the, of the list.
Yeah, and I, I agree as well, I think the amphitheater and the convention center, um.
What I'm saying, because Vincent, I'm, I'm talking about the motel with it too now, yeah?
Yes.
Think, uh, I mean, I, no, no disagreement there. The only thing about, that I like about the boardwalk project is I think that speaks to something different than anything we have, all three of these things do. That's also the smallest price tag for these projects.
The only thing about the boardwalk that's, that's a stickler for me is, the county needs to be getting in board and giving us some money for it. That's just my, my concern, because it's a county thing, and that would knock off some of the prices for it. And I don't know, if we've talked to them, will they do it or not? But that's why the amphitheater and the convention center and the hotel, I know is something that the city would get. that the city would get, well, I don't know, would get, but should get the revenue from. It's just me.
Is there thinking for why not, and I'm not suggesting we do this, I'm asking, is there a thinking for why not just put them on the ballot and let the voters pick?
I just, you can do what you want. Those are my, my priorities.
Those are the ones you like.
Yeah.
Understood. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just legitimately asking the question of if there a reason not to?
Tax, the initial tax rate would be the same. I think the only difference is it would pay off at a different, in a different timeline. It, it would sunset faster with your projects. Whether we put fewer projects on the ballot, or we let, you know, as Drew said, let the citizens decide. You know, following Mark's analogy, you know, I don't know if I'd ever use the boardwalk, but it's, you know, the state is investing a lot of money in Lake Conway right now. We helped pay for a study that involved all of that. There are people who might wanna use it and see that as a big, you know, a big plus. So, it, it sounds like to me, we're gonna propose something on the ballot, right? And so if we're gonna do that, do we let the citizens decide which of the, those projects? And, and those taxes, I mean, maybe they don't want streets and drainage, you know, that could be a no, that could be a no vote.
Let me say one more thing about the Lake Conway thing. We gonna have to have some form of security out there, and they're cutting game and fish people now, stadiums. So we need to consider that as well, when we talking about doing that.
And there will be, I mean, amphitheater or anything else, there will be added fire, police required at all those, all those, anything like that.
Mr. Jones, I appreciate your comments about that. I'm always for letting people, uh, make a decision, making our, letting, letting our folks make a decision, and they can't. I'd like to see all four of them out there. That's my first one.
I'd say I'd wanna see, I'm sure it's my, my priorities.
I know, I got you. I understand.
I guess, 'cause I'm, I guess, 'cause I'm too old, I couldn't do a lot of walking out there at the lake. Scooter maybe, or bike maybe.
For Bonk, he's still here, did he leave?
He's still here.
Oh, I, I have one quick question. Paul, I'm sorry. So if we, and I know this would be just a, a guess on your part, if we were to take, it's almost twenty million, it's nineteen million off the ninety-five, how much quicker would that pay off versus those, I mean, are we talking ten years, or are we talking two years?
Al, I would.
Quarter of the cost.
Well, she asks tough questions, doesn't she? Yeah, I, I would say probably maybe twenty percent reduction in that duration, so.
Three, four years, maybe.
Five, yeah, I mean. You'll have a shorter duration to begin with, and the impact of, of prepayments won't be quite as, uh, noticeable when you have a shorter duration, in terms of your average life.
That could be a pro or a con.
Sure.
You know.
So, Paul, help me. We are not gonna meet the nineteenth, is that correct?
So, that's next week, we, we had talked about.
We're gonna meet the twenty-second, I'm sorry, the twenty-sixth and the second. And we'll have public comment at both of those, so we'll have committee meetings.
Two, uh, two out next week, is that right?
Next week, yes.
I'm out next week.
So we'll have committee meetings prior to the council being on that for public input, and then, uh, the second, the second of September will be a special call council meeting. All right. Any, any other comments, questions, tonight?
Give me a second to think on that.
Amy, do you have anything to add tonight? Okay. Paul, Mr. Whinneyham, okay. Okay, we got twenty-five minutes till the council meeting, so, appreciate it. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Tyler, thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Jim.
Next on the agenda, we have the Community Development Committee. Mr. Hawkins, turn this over to you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm small procedural thing. Should we have, should we have gone to be one first and waived the readings of the ordinances for the ordinance we just passed?
I don't think so.
Did I misunderstand? Okay.
Yeah, no, no.
This has to be done before the ordinance is called.
Yeah. Isn't that what we just, that's what we just called?
We just called an ordinance.
A one is a public hearing.
Right, but then, but then Sheila motioned for the ordinance.
Okay, well then yes, B one should be called first.
So do we reverse suspend the rules?
What do we need to do, Mr.?
Do it over. We'll just do it over.
Yeah, I think you just start with B one.
Okay.
And then go back to that ordinance.
All right. So, Mr. Hawkins.
First item here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve waiving the three readings for ordinances on tonight's agenda, and I'll take a motion to that effect.
We'll move.
Second.
A motion and a second that we waive the three readings, three readings, three readings on ordinances for August 12th, tonight. Any further discussion? It's heard.
For Leadbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
You should have received copies from the minutes from the July 22nd, 2025 City Council meeting. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
As submitted.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 22nd. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is seven to zero. We start tonight with a public hearing for the closing of a portion of a drainage easement on Block Five of the Conway Industrial Park East for Tokinson, Inc. I think Mr. McNeil is here from Tokinson if you need to talk to him, but we will start with Ms. Ann.
You don't really need to hear from me. I was just pulling this up so that people could see. The blue line is what was constructed in 1992. The purple line is what from, from the purple over to the blue is what's being closed. And we have all the appropriate letters from all of the utilities and surrounding property. And I believe that Mr. McNeil should be here to speak to this.
All right, and I will declare this public meeting open. Mr. McNeil, are you here, sir? I see you hiding over there. What is a, I guess, just for the people at home, Mr. McNeil, what, what is your intent here, sir?
So basically what happened is, as you know, we're closing the plant. We've done a survey. We're preparing things for sale and noticed when we had the survey done that there was a drainage easement that looked to be old and really kind of, I shouldn't say misapply, but it was just old and overlooked. There's building that we have, Tokson is built on top of where that drainage easement is. And as you said, the, the kind of the blue line on the right is where the drainage is now. There was a, a project in 1992 that constructed that. And the purple or magenta line, whatever that is, was the original easement before the site that was developed. So I think that it was just an oversight from years ago and it just needs to be cleaned up because we have buildings and concrete and driveways and everything already built on top of these. The ditch was rerouted years ago. So it's kind of the intent, just to kind of clean it up for the future owner.
Jim. Counsel, any questions, Mr. McNeil? Would anyone like to speak for or against from the public? Since no one is, wants to speak for or against, I'll now close this public hearing. Counsel, it is back to you.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have that as ordinance number O 2563. Is that correct?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this, closing of a portion of a drainage easement on Block Five, Conway Industrial Park East for Tokson. Any further discussion? It's heard.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda, we have the Community Development Committee. Mr. Hawkins, turn this over to you, sir.
Mr. Mayor. I'm small procedural thing. Should we have, should we have gone to be one first and waived the readings of the ordinances for the ordinance we just passed?
I don't think so.
Did I misunderstand? Okay.
Yeah, no, no.
This has to be done before the ordinance is called.
Yeah. Isn't that what we just, that's what we just called?
We just called an ordinance.
A one is a public hearing.
Right, but then, but then Sheila motioned for the ordinance.
Okay. Well, then yes, B one should be called first.
So do we reverse suspend the rules?
What do we need to do, Mr.?
Do it over. We'll just do it over.
Yeah, I think you just start with B one.
Okay.
And then go back to that ordinance.
All right. So, Mr. Hawkins.
First item here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve waiving the three readings for ordinances on tonight's agenda, and I'll take a motion to that effect.
We'll move.
Second.
A motion and a second that we waive the three readings, three readings, three readings on ordinances for August 12th, tonight. Any further discussion? It's heard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven zero. Now let's go back to item two. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Six to zero.
Okay. Six to zero. I'm sorry. I am struggling tonight.
It's short tonight.
I am. Well, I have, you know, I got my one, I got my one eye fixed, so I'm, I'm like this. I'm having hearing age trouble, so all you folks that are out there that are not my age yet, it's coming. So let's go back to the public hearing, and I will take a motion on that. Ms. Isby, I think you gave us the first motion.
Yes, and I will make that motion again as well. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close a portion of a drainage easement on Block Five of Conway Industrial Park for Tokson. What's this ordinance number, Ms. Heard?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, thank you. Any further discussion? It's heard.
For Leadbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Thank you, Ms. Heard. Mr. Hawkins. Thank you, Mr. Spurgers, for that catch. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve entering into an agreement with Davie Resource Group for planning services for the Conway Tree Board. And good, good evening. Tell me something good.
Good evening. So last year, we were awarded a grant through the urban and forest, and community forestry program, and so we solicited for professional services to be, through the RFQ process, and so there were three qualified firms that bitted for this work. And through the evaluation and scoring that the evaluation committee did, that resulted in Davie Resource Group being ranked the highest. So we are recommending for you guys to approve Davie Resource Group for this urban and community forestry work to be done.
Motion for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution approving the agreement with Davie Resource Group for planning services. Resource Group for planning services for urban and community forestry plan for the Conway Tree Board.
Resolution number, Ms. Hurd.
Thirty.
Thirty, all right. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes six to zero. Thank you, Robbie. I see you're up again. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, since number three has been pulled, is resolution, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's a resolution to approve and adopt the final report for the downtown drainage study project for the transportation department and Kurt.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am doing fantastic. How are y'all? This is actually just kind of a housekeeping item that close out these, I've got two of these here, some grants that were completed, drainage studies. This one is for the downtown drainage study. It's just a resolution essentially adopting that final report, which has been submitted to us. I have a copy of it here. It's got some, it's got some very useful information, some, some potential, you know, projects down the road that we can use to either, you know, apply for future grants to complete and are incorporated into some of our future projects. In fact, we've, we've already, we're working on some, some downtown work right now, design wise, that we'll, we'll implement at some point that, that does incorporate some of these, some of these recommendations. It also gives us some, some really useful floodplain mapping downtown that we can utilize as well to, you know, kind of identify potential flooding issues and with future developments and so forth.
Questions?
Take a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolutions for the transportation department for the downtown drainage study project. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Resolution twenty-five thirty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's a six to zero. While I got you up there, Kurt, and we're on TV, just ballpark, give us a possible completion date on Prince and Country Club and Highway sixty-four and Hogan.
And Salem.
Okay.
That one, too.
All right, so I'll start with, I'll start with, with the Prince and Country Club. That is, that is going very well. We hope to have that complete. Actually, they're going to be putting asphalt on the roundabout. Of course, it's been operating as a roundabout here for, for a couple of weeks, I believe. And they, I believe the asphalt Rogers Group will be in town next week sometime. Hopefully, not, we've, we've told them not Monday. That's the first day of school. That would be a disaster, but we're, we're probably looking at the middle of next week some, sometime to start some of that asphalt work, and hopefully, you know, we'll try to schedule that away from the opening and closing of school and so forth. But we're looking at sometime, let's see, what is it now, August? It'll be, I mean, it, they're gonna, they'll have that one substantially complete within a month or two, I think. It's, it's going very, very well. The Hogan sixty-four, that's, of course, a highway department project. We don't have a whole lot of control over that one, but based on what we've been told, that one's still on schedule to complete sometime in October. The Salem project, the, you know, the, I think the target date on that one right now to get that complete is going to be sometime in, it's, it's, it's probably going to be October as well.
Good deal.
So that's kind of where we're at on those. A lot, a lot will be finishing up.
That's what I'll tell everybody.
Well, it'll, it'll be accurate until it's not. No, they're, right now, that's the, that's the current schedule is, I mean, we should have a lot wrapping up in, in the October timeframe.
And while the Rogers Group is in Conway, we are also going to repave a large portion of downtown.
Yes, we have several streets downtown that are, that are scheduled to be milled and overlaid. And of course, Chestnut, obviously, which I don't know if you've driven down it, but it's, it's, and we knew it was going to be rough when, when we got done, but they're, they're supposed to be in town to do some of that work. I think that's going to be in sometime in September to finish all that up.
Good deal. Thank you, Kurt.
Thanks, Coach.
Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve and adopt the final report for the Centennial Creek Drainage Study Project for the Transportation Department. And once again, Kurt.
I, pretty much identical to the previous item, except the location. This was a drainage study done in the Centennial Creek area there where we've experienced some flooding. Some of the, mainly some pretty severe street flooding in some of those areas over there. This, this report again identified several potential options to help mitigate some of those flooding issues with some cost estimates and so forth, and that's, those again are projects that we can, you know, look at some potential future grant funding to help address some of those issues over in that area. And it was funded, it was, again, it was, it, the study itself was funded with a grant, and one of the requirements of the grant was to formally adopt the study once it was completed, which that's what this resolution would do.
To approve the ordinance thirty-two, is that right?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution, thank you.
Yes.
I had the right number and the wrong word.
You closed, closed, Ken.
That's all right. You caught me early tonight, so it just evens it.
There you go.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the final report for the Centennial Creek Drainage Study Project for the Transportation Department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes six to zero. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at ten-twenty and eleven-oh-two Gum Street. It presently is zoned C three, and the request is to zone it R two. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on July twenty-first, and at that time, the commission voted unanimously to forward this to city council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance oh twenty-five sixty-four.
Yes, counsel, the only comments that staff has is that the property is located directly north of these two, the property that is located directly north of these two lots is zoned R two. There's a mix of zoning in this area. We feel that it's appropriate and not out of character for the area. And traffic impact for this development will likely be minimal, and Mr. Alex Smith is here to speak if you have questions.
Just to the north of Burger King?
Directly behind Burger King, two lots right there behind that.
That's what I thought.
Also, any questions? Back to you.
Do a motion here?
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance oh twenty-five sixty-four. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance to approve the rezoning of property located at ten-twenty Gum Street and eleven-twenty Gum from C three to R two. Any further discussion? It's heard.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow a barber or beauty shop use in the O three zone for property at three oh six Salem. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission July twenty-one of this year, and the commission voted to send this to city council with a recommendation of approval. The recommendation was a unanimous vote, and we have, well, it's a conditional use permit.
They have seven conditions.
That's what I was just about to say. There are seven conditions that the applicant has agreed to. Staff thinks that it is, it's limited to just a beauty shop, so if they, if the use ever changes, they'll have to come back. And Mr. Pennington is not here tonight. He's the applicant, but Landon Sanders is here to speak or answer questions.
Hey, how you doing?
This one's pretty straightforward, guys, but is there any questions anybody has? It's right there by the construction on Salem.
Right there by where?
By the construction.
By the construction.
But there's construction on Salem?
It's Mr. Hawkins' favorite spot.
It's my favorite, my favorite spot. I'm just glad it's open for school.
Oh, yeah.
Because it wasn't when it was closing last year.
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance. What number, Ms. Hurd?
A conditional use.
Stagnated.
I'm just going to stop.
No, come on, we ain't doing this, man.
Now you know how to do this.
I'll second that.
Whatever you say, she said.
There we go. We have a motion and a second to approve a conditional use permit to allow barber or beauty shop use in the O three zone for property located at three oh six Salem. Any further discussion?
This is it.
It's heard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes six to zero. Thanks, sir.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Hawkins, last item.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow a religious facility in the O two zone. This is for property located at forty-five ninety-five Prince Street. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the twenty-first of this month, and at that time, they voted seven to nothing of the request be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of approval. And there are nine conditions that are listed there, and anything, Ann, that sticks out?
Well, the, the one thing that I did want to bring up is condition eight-nine typically a C P lasts for eighteen months. They have to start using it within the eighteen months to keep it going, and we did extend, or the Planning Commission did extend that to twenty-four. The church has got to do some fundraising and things like that, so we did allow that. But other than that, they've agreed to all the other conditions, and it's pretty straightforward. And Mr., I'm sorry, Reverend Lyle Rupert is here. Oh, okay, well, you had me. Yeah, but anyway, he's here to speak.
Come on, Lyle, you didn't have to wear the brace.
Please, please. Well, I'm happy to answer any questions, but yes, we approve all the nine conditions that the, the commission had requested.
All right. I think I can do it this time. I would make a motion for the approval of the conditional use permit.
Bingo. And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this conditional use permit to allow religious facilities in the O two zone for property located at forty-five ninety-five Prince. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes six to zero. Thank you, Lyle. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Next on the agenda, we have public service committee. First up is a resolution approving the acceptance of a CAT excavator for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Thames.
Good evening, everyone. So this is just a request to accept the excavator that was purchased by A and P. It's just a donation that's going to go along to improving, maintaining all of our trails and parks.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution, R twenty-five thirty-three. Second.
I have a motion and a second approving the acceptance of a CAT excavator for the Parks and Recreation Department, and we appreciate the A and P commission. Any further discussion?
Question on how the baby's doing?
She's good. She's good. She's starting to sleep. She gave us eight hours last night. I will take it.
At it, at it, girl.
Yeah, she's good. Thank you, guys.
That's a good thing, good.
Yeah.
It's heard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes six to zero. And the last item of business, now it's ordered to accept and approve the appropriation of funds for the Conway Animal Services. We have David Mitchell and Spencer Clausen here. How you, Spencer?
How you doing?
You guys doing a great job out there.
Hey, I appreciate that. Come on out. We'll, we'll send you home with a kitten.
I think Ledbetter wants to adopt some cats.
Doesn't even come see me.
All right, this is where we're, we're just receiving, we've already received a thousand dollars from Best Friends Animal Society, and we're just here tonight to get it into our miscellaneous account by appropriating these funds. It's a thousand dollars.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, oh twenty-five sixty-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation of funds, this ordinance for appropriation for the Conway Animal Services. Any further discussion?
I was going to hope you'd get your last, but she jumped in there.
She beat me.
It's her. You can get it right.
Four years of practice.
Yes, I heard.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Thank you, Spencer. And counsel, I'm not going to mention a name tonight, but the city sanitation worker who was injured in accident passed away. Yeah. Yeah. That's.
You said that was not an on-the-job accident?
No, no, he was actually going into work and was struck on Highway sixty-four west. Yeah. Anyway, counsel, that's all I have. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.